Cat TV is celebrating 30 years of community media. Help support Cat TV's next 30 years by becoming a member today. Your membership will help us continue covering meaningful, local content. Thank you for supporting your local community media station.
Well, good evening and welcome to the July 11th Bennington Select Board Meeting. My name is Jeanne Jenkins and I chair this board and I'd like my fellow board members to introduce themselves.
Hi, I'm Gary Corey.
Hi, Tom Haley. Thanks for being here this evening.
Good evening, I'm Jim Carroll.
Hi, I'm Jeanne Connor.
Good evening, Sarah Perrin.
Good evening, Bruce Lee Clark.
Excellent. And also with us this evening, we have Stu Hurd, our Town Manager, Nancy Lively, who takes excellent minutes, and Jim Vires on the camera for Cat TV. Thank you all. All right, so first up, I want to amend the agenda. We will not be hearing about the Y summer camp this evening. We postponed that to a different date. So that we're going to remove from the agenda. Otherwise, we're set. Can I have a motion to amend the agenda, please?
So moved.
All right, all those in favor, please, any discussion? No? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, great. All right, so with that, let's begin as we always do with the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the United States of America, which is a republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
No, I know, I don't. Laugh at me.
It's okay. Thank you, Jim. It's the middle of the summer. All right, and next up, a vision statement. Jeanne, would you read the vision statement that guides our work?
Sure. Bennington is a welcoming, engaged, inclusive, resilient community where everyone, regardless of identity, shares in our vitality and benefits from an outstanding quality of life.
Thank you very much. All right, then next up, we have the consent agenda. For the purposes of discussion, could I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So moved.
Thank you. Any discussion? Any comments or questions on the minutes or the warrants, either Stuart or Nancy? No? All right. Well, with that, all those in favor of the accepting the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Abstentions.
Thank you. It's going to be an evening. All right, all right, there we are. Okay, great. Next up is public comment. Looks like we have four people who would like to comment. Is there anyone else that has not signed up but would like to comment? Nancy? Okay. All right. Okay, so the purpose of public comment is to allow residents an opportunity to share information or make announcements that benefit the community at large. The topic should not be related to an agenda item. If a member of the public wants to comment on an agenda item, they can do so during the discussion of that item. Please try and keep your comments to three minutes or less. And all speakers are required to state their name and town of residence. And sharing comments, announcements, and concerns are encouraged. Rather than asking questions, this is a time for the board and the public at large to hear your comments and questions, and we will make sure that we get back to you, but it is not a time for discussion. Okay? And when you have completed your comments, if you would, please sit down so that the next person can come up. All right, with that, let's see. Sam Rustino.
Good evening, Select Board members. I'm going to be going over all over the board for my comments, but there are some items I would like to make a comment on the agenda items at a later time tonight, but Thursday nights have been great for the cruise nights. It's a nice welcome. It's not quite the car show.
Sam, could you identify yourself?
Sorry, thank you for reminding me.
It's okay.
They know who I am. I'm Sam Rustino of Bennington, Vermont. I've been resident 59 years here in Bennington.
For the record.
For the record. Want the record show?
Yeah.
Okay. And I did sign it. Thank you. Thursday nights have been great. And last Thursday was, I think, the best total there was. It was nice to hear noise on Main Street with the public. And through social media, I've been getting other car enthusiasts to come into Bennington, and I hope it continues on. We've got one more date, I guess, in August. So I hope next year it does continue. In regards to an ordinance in this town, we have vegetation ordinance. I think it's time that we start to put toe to heel on that ordinance. We've got a health inspector along with a town inspector, Paul Desenrow. I've been in conversation, but I think he needs to be held to the grindstone. I think he needs to sit there and get out in the public and find housing that has either been abandoned or up for sale that hasn't been taken care of. This time of month, you can tell what buildings are vacant and what are not vacant or abandoned by how grass has grown. It's an insult to the town. We've got people that we're being watched all the time and judged. And for people that come into this town and see high grass, they can make or break us. There are a couple of properties. I know you're working on CDC. It hurts me that we have to go through a litigation, even though you've had numerous letters and tried to contact with the general public to try to work with the re-imagining that, those properties. Another one is the Sicko gas station that vacated as you come into town. And the other one is naturally friendly, it's to be watched on. They shouldn't be having letters drafted off to say, "Take care of your property." They need to be patrolled and watched and make sure that they adhere to this ordinance. And then the next question I've asked, it's going on three years, our stick ladder truck. Are we going to get that in the bay or is it just sitting on hold? And I know it's a COVID situation, but we should be having a stick ladder truck in that bay as of now.
Sam?
And I know there's other apparatuses that need to be replaced, and that's going to be another big budget item. I'm done. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. I didn't hear the third one.
The ladder truck is in New Hampshire being detailed, and it'll arrive here, we hope, within the next 30 days.
Great. Great. Thank you, Sam. Deb? You state your name and town or residence.
Debbie Matt from Bennington. I noticed on the last numbers that I saw for the ARPA funds that the senior, the new senior center and the skate park were combined under one total, and I was wondering why. And I feel that they should be separate totals. And I just got a copy of the next proposal. I know it's not set in stone or anything, but, and I'm having a hard time reading it, but it looks to me like the Y has gotten more space, and it looks like they're moving the fitness center out of the rec center over there. It looks like the entrance to the senior center is way down in the back, which I think will be a hardship for seniors to, when they get in, to get all the way down around the back to get into the building. I feel there's too many shared spaces that be a conflict of over-scheduling these spaces I know some of the seniors don't like having younger people in their space. We don't, at the current senior center, we don't have young people in our area, and I don't know how well that would go over over there with a shared lounge or whatever. And it's come to my attention that there's been meetings without the seniors there. I believe there was one last week discussing the layout or whatever of the new building. So I just, when I first saw the map, I mean, so many things went through my mind, and it's just, I don't know if now's the appropriate time to be hitting on them or, and I have the feeling it won't do any good anyway because you're going to do as you want.
Thanks, Deb. What I do know, I think we are planning to have an update on Ben-Hi and use of ARPA funds at the next meeting. I think that's on the schedule. I'm sort of looking at Dan for a nod. Right, we were going to do a Ben-Hi update at the next meeting. I have not seen the plans that you're talking about, so you're ahead of me. So I'm thinking, it's on the agenda for the next meeting as far as I know, so that will be a...
There will be another meeting with the seniors at the senior center to go over these proposals.
Then that'll be before our next Select Board meeting?
I don't know what the schedule is, but I know that there is a plan for the architects to be there to go to the center and to review them.
Okay. So there are two meetings coming up, one with the seniors at the senior center and one with the Select Board in the next couple of weeks.
So have the funds actually been combined for this particular target? Well, we have very rough estimates. I think we allocated initially about 1.9 million for the senior center meals on wheels renovations, and I'm not entirely sure.
But what we did was do a lump sum for those because we didn't know what the amounts were.
I mean, we've only received the first half of the ARPA funds anyway. The next half will come in September of this year. So we don't have all of the funds on hand, but we're working off of estimates.
So thank you for raising the questions, and there should be meetings addressing that very, very soon. Let's see. Kelly Carroll.
I just wanted to invite everyone to three different events that are going on this month. Two of them are this Saturday, the 16th of July. The first is the monthly Walooosac Downtown River Walk. That's at 10:00 a.m. at the People's Park. It's free. It's family-friendly. It's pet-friendly, so why not come out and take a nice stroll up the River Walk and then down Main Street and back and get to know some people? And then also, most of you know that those started after Emily's tragedy. On Wednesday, July 27th, at 6:00 p.m., we're going to be doing a memorial dedication ceremony for her at the Walooosac River Walk. And everyone is welcome if you'd like to join us. And then finally, on this Saturday at 10:00 a.m., there is, the post-13 American Legion riders are going to be having their second annual "We Salute You Veterans" ride. That ride starts at 10 o'clock. You can register anytime after 8:00. The drivers' meeting will be at 9:30. All proceeds stay local and go to the Vermont Veterans Home. It's $20 a rider, a driver, $5 a passenger. There's going to be 50/50 raffles, and if anybody wants to donate to the cause, please reach out to the American Legion. We'd love to have the support, and again, it all stays local. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Kelly, can you say what time the memorial is?
The memorial on Wednesday, the 27th, will be at 6:00 p.m. outside on the walkway near where her attack happened, where the tree is. And thank you to everyone involved in that. So appreciate it and appreciate the support.
Thank you. Nancy?
Nancy White, Bennington. If you're going to have the Ben-Hi on the next agenda, prior to that, on the town website, please put that six-page lease-to-own contract that I've asked you several times to put so the public can read it, and people are going to have as many questions as I did. I also don't understand why meetings are going on at the senior center. I found out about two so far. They're being held during the day. I don't think any notice. How can the public even go and participate and ask questions if you're holding them when most of us are at work? That's my first thing. Second thing is a question I asked you in January at your televised budget meeting in regards to the YMCA. Our town budget year starts in July and ends on June. This month, we're starting the budget that the voters passed in March. For some reason, you set up the Y budget year in Bennington to run from January to December. I believe that means the YMCA is benefiting from two different town budgets each year. We never did this for our own recreation department. Our Parks and Recreation Budget runs from July to June along with all the other town budgets. So please tell me why we're doing something for the YMCA that we don't do for anybody else.
The YMCA's budget year is a January to December budget year, so when they look at their costs, they are looking at a January to December. We are looking at a June, or July to June. So yes, it does run over two fiscal years, but we, through the negotiation of the MOU, are able to follow those costs and budget for them appropriately.
Well, I still think they're benefiting twice. They're double-dipping.
No, 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 no. The contract is a year-to-year contract for them. We carry it over two fiscal years. They don't get two payments. They only get the one.
I think for what we're paying into the Parks and Recreation Budget, they're benefiting from twice, two different budgets each year. Again, I don't know why we had to set them up separately from all of our other organizations in Bennington.
It's a business decision on their part to run a calendar-year budget. That's the way the YMCA nationally carries their budgets. We don't do it that way. So we have to be able to work within their budget constraints and within ours, which we do.
And Nancy, my understanding about the meetings at Ben-Hi, I know the architect and Shannon have been meeting with individuals who have, you know, have any sort of stake or interest in space in the building. So those are not public meetings. We haven't been invited. We're not apprised of them. They are meeting, so not to have a discussion about it, just to say, "That's what those meetings are."
Well, this is the purpose, so the citizens can find out what's going on in this town. I'll remind you, the people of Bennington have owned and paid for that senior building since about 1978, and we should have been told. We had a chance to sign a petition to block you from giving it away to the guy who bought the Ben-Hi. We weren't even told that.
Nancy, before we go down that path again, I just want to stop you because this is a conversation that we've had before. Jeanne, if you want to speak, you're welcome to.
Yeah. Just bear with me. I prepared a statement that came out of a training. Nancy, will you please sit down?
Well, I just had one more thing to add.
Will you please sit down?
I've been asking you for 18 months, trying to get answers...
Excuse me, I have the floor. The chair has asked me to speak. Will you please go sit down?
Sure. And I'll remind you, I asked in January for an update on the Ben-Hi, and you said it was a privately-owned building, and the town couldn't do anything.
Nancy, please sit down. Thank you.
Okay, I'll start over. So just bear with me. What I'm going to say came out of a training that several of us on the Select Board participated in several months ago. And I want you to forgive me for reading this, but I wanted to make sure I didn't forget anything I wanted to say. And FYI, I will not be responding to any questions or comments after I'm finished speaking. I want to share a few things we learned at a recent training by the Vermont League of Cities and Towns. Several of us attended a few months ago. The topic of the training was something like how to conduct effective meetings. I don't remember exactly what the title was. There were a few comments made by the trainers who are proficient in their understanding of the open-meeting law that resonated with me and are valuable in thinking about how we conduct our meetings and consider making changes to our process. The Select Boards I have been a part of, including the current board, have allowed members of the public to speak for long periods of time, and in some cases, many times during meetings. So the expectation that has been created is that the public can speak as often and for as long as they wish. The open-meeting law speaks to allowing the public to speak for a reasonable amount of time. I think we can all agree, the amount of time the public has been allowed to speak is far more than reasonable. Another statement the trainers said was that our meetings are ours to conduct business. They are public meetings, but they are not for the public. It's really easy to forget that. We were also told that just because a member of the public makes a comment or asks a question, we are not required to respond. It's human nature to want to clarify and engage, but we don't have to, and at times it is not helpful for us to respond. So when we refuse to respond or do not allow someone to speak, we are not violating the open-meeting law. I hope my comments are helpful to the public and the board. If nothing else, they are a reminder of why we are here and how we can do our best to conduct informative, efficient meetings and create an atmosphere that is inviting and pleasant. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeanne. You're welcome. We have one more person for public comment, and that is Denise Mayne.
My name is Denise Mayne, and I live in Bennington, and I'm the Director of Sunrise Family Resource Center. I was here a couple of months ago, and I had a request for local ARPA funds and to partner with the town of Bennington with our Families at the Center project, which you approved. Along with Rutland County Parent-Child Center, we submitted an implementation proposal to the William and Dorothy O'Neill Foundation, and we were successful in obtaining a three-year grant. We're pretty proud of that. They were very impressed that Sunrise had support from the town, and this really helped to strengthen our application. So I came here tonight, thank you all in person, and to share this great news. We also secured some funding through the Vermont Community Foundation and shared with them the town of Bennington's commitment to improving the lives of all families in our community, which, again, was very well-received. We are thrilled to be moving forward with this project after our pilot phase and receiving feedback from local families and community agencies. We are taking the summer to finalize our plans, and we're hopeful to begin our work in September, helping families to build social capital. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
And I did bring a little...
Congratulations.
Oh, yeah, it was pretty exciting. I brought a little flyer. I don't know if you want it, just on social capital. It's just a one-pager. I'll just put it here.
Good job. That's awesome. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much. It's nice. And thank you for coming and letting everyone know.
Yeah.
It's fantastic. Public comment is now closed. So with that, I am going to move on to our next agenda item, which is looking at the hub-and-spoke overview. We have a slight change in the plan for tonight. Todd Salvesold, thank you, is going to talk with us and provide, I think, some sense of overview in terms of drug crisis or treatment in Bennington, and also talk about hub-and-spoke, and then, I think, introduce some folks in the audience perhaps. Yes? So I'm going to turn it over to you. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Todd Salvesold. I am a registered nurse by trade. I'm an employee of Southwest Vermont Medical Center, but I presently serve as the spoke lead for Bennington Blueprint. If you don't know what a spoke is, don't worry, I will get to that in just a little bit. I'm hopeful that I do have enough for some folks in the audience to come, to go around so you can kind of see some of the statistics I'm going to speak to. But primarily, I work for, like I said, for the spoke, which is essentially medicated assistance treatment for individuals with opioid use disorder. That's pretty much my job. Throughout Bennington County, we have a number of offices called spokes, and essentially what they are, these are offices that prescribe buprenorphine or Suboxone to patients with an opioid use disorder. For the most part, they are co-located within primary care offices, with the exception of one, which we call Superspoke. That would be Savita, which is right here in Bennington, which is by far our largest spoke. At any point in time, they're probably serving about close to 500 people, whereas the next largest spoke is serving like about 60 people, just to kind of give you a rough idea of the scope of the number of people they serve. What I want to do is just kind of give you, since I only have 15 minutes, just kind of give you like a top-down view, give you a view of Vermont's treatment system, kind of where we stand, and then boil that down to where we stand in Bennington County, kind of give you an idea of where we were, where we are now, and kind of where we're going. Because this is actually, the timing of this is actually good because there is, I don't want to jinx it, but there is a little hope on the horizon in terms of some of the stats that I'm looking at. So just want to get into this a little bit. Everything I do, for the most part, is driven by Department of Health data. I receive monthly reports from them, where they kind of let us know where the state stands and where Vermont stands. On the first page here, you have, this is kind of just a real quick summary, it's called the Monthly Opioid Update, that we receive from Department of Health, and they kind of tell us where, you know, how deep the crisis is. And I'm sure, unless you've been living in a cave with your hands over your ears, you're aware that the nation has a pretty significant opioid crisis, and Vermont is no exception. Bennington is no exception as well. As you can see here, I won't get too much into this, but there are a number of people, as you can see, almost 9,400 people who are in treatment in Vermont in a hub or spoke at any point in time. And like I said, I'll explain what the difference between a hub and spoke is. But as you look down here to the section called overdoses, you can see that in 2021, we're at 51 overdoses in the state at this point in time, as of last year. So right now, as of January, February, and March, the state has experienced 43 overdoses. Last year at this time, we're at 51, which is actually, for me, that number is still way too high, but that is hopeful because I've been looking at these numbers for about two years now, and I can tell you that the pandemic absolutely just caused havoc in terms of overdoses. Numbers were just astronomical through the roof. So there is a little bit of hope here, and I'll actually get into this in just a little bit. And then also, non-fatal OD numbers are also dropping, which is actually, like I said, I don't want to jinx it, but there is a little bit of hope here. If you move on to the next page, basically, this is the number, and I didn't want to present 2022 data to date because there is a bit of a lag in that when we receive it from the state. There are, there's also, there's usually a pretty significant number of cases where the cause of death has not been determined, so that we're enough to where I think if I presented that now, that data could be skewed. So I will present you 2021, which is actually a pretty decent lock. And as you can see, these are all the counties in the state of Vermont, and basically, it's a month-by-month breakdown of overdoses in each of these counties. As you can see, 2021, there were 210 fatalities in the state of Vermont as a whole, and if you look at Bennington, we were at 16. So we had 16 fatalities in 2021 that related to opioids. If you go kind of along the line, January through December, you can see we're pretty much averaging one or two fatalities per month pretty consistently. If you look at other, some of the other counties, they'll go along with zero, and then all of a sudden, they'll have spikes of five. The good news and the bad news is, the bad news is, we continue to experience fatalities. The good news is, is some of the spikes that other locations have been experiencing is generally related to essentially what's like a bad batch of heroin or fentanyl that's been going through the county, which tends to, you know, unfortunately, cause a lot of fatalities. We haven't really had any, like, large spike alerts here in Bennington County recently. We're hoping that trend continues. But if you look, we're at 16, and if you scroll down, probably the highest is Chittenden County. And if you think of that, so they had 38 fatalities in 2021. We had 16. But if, and this is essentially just total numbers, but if you think of that in terms of per capita, I basically look at that number as how many fatalities per 10,000 individuals. Chittenden County, which is, they're probably like about 150,000, 160,000 residents in that county as a whole, which hopefully my math isn't wrong. Bennington is probably like around 35,000, I would say. around 35,000, I would say. We're basically double what Chittenden County is doing. So even though they have a much larger population and would be expected to have a higher number, we're unfortunately higher per capita. And if you look at a map of the entire state of Vermont, the southern part of the state really tends to kind of get beat up a little bit more. If you look at Rutland, Rutland is significantly higher, and I think their population might only be like 10,000 to 15,000 more than us. So they're pretty significant as well. Go over towards Brattleboro, that county, they're actually pretty significant. So the southern part of the state really seems to kind of take the brunt of this epidemic as opposed to the northern part. There is some thoughts about, it might have something to do with geography. Our proximity to Troy, which is a large, is basically directly connected by ID.7 to New York City, so some geography may come into play. But, like I said, there will be some hope. So this is all the bad news, we'll get this, kind of get this out of the way now. But our numbers were rough, pandemic beat us up a little bit, probably a lot of that had to do with the closure, not the closure, but the inability of some people to go to see their providers face-to-face. Everything was remote, including counseling, so very challenging time for people with an opioid use disorder. So, how does Vermont manage this? If you look nationwide, Vermont has by far probably the most unique treatment model of any state, possibly California, but the hub and spoke system, which is basically the model that Vermont has adapted, which is based on, which is actually based on a European model, is really second to none in the nation. We have basically two systems, a hub, which if you go out of Vermont, if you go into any other state, it would be comparable to like a methadone clinic. But I don't want you to think about a hub as just a methadone clinic, because it's a pretty comprehensive treatment organization. And then you have a spoke, which is essentially called a lower level of care, and this is more or less outpatient, where a person can go, you know, more or less, less frequently. Hubs are basically every single day. You go to a hub, generally, nine times out of 10, the medication you get there is methadone. This is for people with very significant opioid use disorders, so they need more or less daily support. Once they graduate from that system, they navigate out to a spoke, which is essentially what we have here in Bennington County. And spokes tend to provide suboxone to people, less frequent contact because the patient is more stable. The idea is, if a person is in a hub and they stabilize and they don't need that level of care, they can gravitate out to a spoke, which tends to be in their own community. And if a person is struggling in a spoke, they can gravitate into a hub to get that higher level of care. Problem in Bennington is, we do not have a hub. So we are very spoke, we are very spoke-heavy, which is fantastic. There is no wait. Generally, if a person has an opioid use disorder and they want to get treatment that day, they can basically walk into SBMC Emergency Department or into Savita, and they can walk away with a prescription that day, which is, you know, which is fantastic, because that's, the first line of defense is basically usually the medication. And there is like a comprehensive, you know, therapy, and all that comes into play. But the problem there is, we do have about 100 Bennington County residents who the spoke is just not sufficient for them. And these folks have to go an hour in any direction, generally over into North Adams or Rutland or Brattleboro, to get a nickel's worth of medication. So there's an hour there, an hour back, and I can imagine, and you can imagine, if you have any sort of life or transportation issues in Bennington, that is a pretty significant barrier to you. So there are people who it's just not feasible for them to go back, you know, spend two hours of their day in transit back and forth to get this medication, so they're kind of stuck with the hub system. The other piece is, we do have great access, but there isn't a lot of choice when it comes to spoke services here. I'm going to introduce Alex Figaro here in a little bit. He's with UCS, and like I said, there is some hope on the horizon in terms of where we're going. United Counseling Services is now considering becoming a spoke, which is fantastic, because that'll offer a little additional choice in the town of Bennington, because right now, there's really kind of one game in town, and if that doesn't fit, you're kind of out of luck. So to have additional choice in Bennington, I think, is going to have a dramatic impact on our numbers right here in town in terms of treatment choice. There is potentially a hub coming, and this hasn't been confirmed, but we are hopeful that within a year's time, we will have that hub here in Bennington, which will offer essentially a higher level of care for a significant number of people. I see the spoke numbers on a monthly basis, and you see people go in for a month, relapse, in for a month, relapse, it's just a revolving door. They need more. And so I believe this is going to have a pretty big impact on where we're going. Just to go back to, unfortunately, I don't have the numbers yet for Vermont, but as, on the first page here, where I kind of referred to the fatalities, the opioid fatalities and the non-fatal rates, they are decreasing. And, like I said, I don't want to jinx this, but over the past three months, these numbers have been going down. I don't, I can't say with any certainty what this is caused by, but I can say spokes are opening back up to in-person treatment, so people are now seeing folks face-to-face, so people are going back into treatment, which is fantastic. So I believe that has an impact on this. And also, agencies like UCS, and we have Turning Point with us as well, have really gone the extra mile to make sure Narcan is accessible in our communities. So where at one point, basically, the only place you could really get Narcan was Turning Point, UCS, the Sprint Service Program, the hubs and spokes have just, essentially, if you need Narcan, you can have it. You can basically get Narcan that day. So I think access to Narcan has also caused a dramatic drop in these numbers. So I am kind of hopeful that these will continue to drop, and then as we get agencies like UCS hopefully onboard, and then a hub located here, our numbers will continue to drop. So I think we are headed in the right direction after what I can assure you are two absolutely terrible years. Medication is just part of the picture. UCS also does, they do therapy, which is also a big component of that. The nice part about the hub and spoke system is, I oversee a team of nurses and therapists that are embedded in each of these spokes. They provide their services to all patients absolutely free of charge. So if you have the Cadillac of insurance programs or you're unable to pay, you have access to a case manager and to a therapist, and no claims are ever filed, so you basically receive these services for free. That is also just a small part of the picture. In a second, I would like to just introduce Margie Diamond. She is with, she's the new, she's the interim executive director of Turning Point, and if you're familiar with Turning Point, they provide peer recovery services, which is an absolute crucial part of that, because these are folks with lived experience who are also there to really kind of support the patient who's experiencing an opioid use disorder. I want to give some time to Margie, but before I do that, I just want to know, does anybody have any questions? I want to do that fairly quickly.
Oh, I think there'll be questions. So I guess a question is, do you want to take questions from the select board and the public?
Absolutely.
Yeah, okay. So let's start with the select board. Jean, I saw your hand go up fast.
Yeah, and this may be too long for you to really answer, but can you just explain briefly, and if you can, that's okay, what it is about fentanyl? I know that it's, I don't know if we use the word laced with fentanyl. So is it less expensive for the dealers to put fentanyl?
Absolutely.
And when someone gets a whatever hit with fentanyl, is it sometimes fatal, sometimes not fatal? Is it because the dose is bigger? Can you just, in a nutshell?
Essentially, right now, I mean, it's called heroin, but the really, if you look down here right now, at the overdoses here, 91% have involved fentanyl. Last year was, at one point, it was 100%. So essentially, it's all fentanyl. And so it used to be, there's a little bit of fentanyl in my heroin, and now it's, there's a little bit of heroin in my fentanyl. It's switched. So essentially, if someone's using something from the street, it's, as you can see, 90% of the time, it's going to be fentanyl. In terms of access, absolutely. China, at one point, they have tweaked this a little bit, but China was a big supplier of that. I mean, not intentionally, but the chemical components that you could use to, you know, to make fentanyl are actually pretty accessible. They still are to some degree. People who know how to game the system can get all the components and kind of, you know, mix this up on their own, which is one of the reasons for the fatalities, because there's obviously, people making fentanyl, there's no quality control, you know, in the black market side of this. The other issue with fentanyl is, is how it's the chemical composition in terms of, so essentially, you can get a bag of fentanyl, and the way, it's essentially mixed with other chemicals, but fentanyl itself does not bind very well to other chemicals, to some of the things that it's caught with. And so you can have a bag of fentanyl, and basically, like, 90% of that bag can just have maybe like 10% fentanyl, but down in the far corner, there's like a 90% dose just sitting there waiting. So you maybe took three, and you're like, hey, this is fine. All of a sudden, you take four, but you could basically be taking a dose that's 10x stronger than anything you've taken out of that same bag. And so there's, that leads to a huge amount of overdoses. It's also just because, and I hate to say this, but there are times too where people are always kind of, a person with an opioid use disorder, if it's really significant, they're not using to get high anymore, they're using to stop from getting sick. And unfortunately, it takes more and more of that drug to keep the sick away. So sometimes when a person hears, this is, there's been a fatality from this particular, you know, drug that's on the street, people will actually seek that out, because that's strong. If it's enough to kill somebody, that's the strong stuff. And so there are people who will actually seek that out, only because they're looking for the next strongest thing that's out there.
Wow. I have one more, hopefully this is a quicker answer, but thank you, that was very informative. I know that obviously doctors have changed the way they prescribe opioids after surgery, because it is a necessary drug in some cases. Have you seen an improvement in the numbers of people because of the changes in the way doctors are prescribing opioids?
Absolutely. If you look actually in the first sheet, there's prescription monitoring, and this basically monitors, it's the morphine equivalents that are being prescribed, that's gone down significantly. So if you look from 16 to now, it's actually, it's gone from 10 million down to, basically, it's in half. So doctors are prescribing less of that. That was essentially the first wave of the opioid epidemic, was prescription medication. They're aware of that, so that's gone down. Yeah, and now, for the most part, you see, you don't see a lot of long-term prescriptions. I mean, there are some people who are in very chronic pain and do require that to live a somewhat normal life, but long-term prescriptions, alternate methods of pain management are definitely being sought out more.
Good. Thank you.
Great. Other questions? Anyone from the board have a question? Questions from the audience? Sam, introduce yourself. No, Sam, you need to come up to the mic.
I'll buy my rules, my conditions, thank you.
Well, so Kat, so the viewers at home.
I'm Italian, I got a strong enough vocal. Is it true that, are you familiar with, it's on social media about the dollar bill with fentanyl? Is there any truth to that? Where people pick it up and it can be absorbed like that?
Absolutely. I haven't heard, yeah, so there could be...
Tell the folks.
Oh, yeah. So, I mean, fentanyl is, it just takes a tiny, tiny amount of fentanyl in order to be fatal. So sometimes just like simple contact with it is, it can be, you know, fail for some folks. So, I mean, this is where it's hats off to our emergency services and police departments, where, you know, they can go into a crime scene, and, you know, there could essentially be, you know, a lethal dose of fentanyl kind of sitting there but completely unseen. So that can actually, you know, be true. The scary part is, fentanyl's also showing up in things where people aren't expecting it to. There are people who their drug of choice is cocaine, but you're seeing fentanyl more and more in cocaine-related fatalities, and there have been actually a couple of cases where fentanyl's shown up in marijuana and has caused overdoses as well. So, do we think that's intentional? No, but a lot of times, someone who sells drugs will sell multiple drugs, and obviously, their quality control was a little lax, and some of the fentanyl did get into marijuana, and unfortunately for people who think they're just buying something, you know, much less benign, are actually buying something pretty fatal, so.
I've got a quick question for you.
Sure.
How fast-acting is fentanyl? Because it appears from what I've seen anyway, is that, you know, when people are given Narcan, they recover almost immediately. However, the question that I have in my mind is, does it take a long time to activate?
Fentanyl?
Yeah.
No, yeah, fentanyl acts quickly. Fentanyl acts very, very quickly. I mean, you can almost get, ask, I administered fentanyl, and as an ED nurse, I've administered fentanyl, and you can tell a person to count backwards from 10, and they're out by the time they get to three. So it's, I mean, fentanyl acts very, fentanyl acts very, very rapidly. The great part is Narcan acts very rapidly as well, and it's essentially, once you give that dose of Narcan, it's actually, if you've ever seen a person Narcaned, it's actually amazing how quickly it reacts, so.
Kelly, did you have a question? Kelly and then Clark.
Kelly Carroll Bennington, I think that the hub is long past due. I know a lot of family members and friends and everything who would like to possibly advocate for that. Is there something that people, because I know people who have to drive to Rutland every day or take a family member up every day. Is there anything that we can do as a community or something to help support that? I know that's probably controversial, but I got to ask anyway.
Sure. Absolutely. At this point, like I said, I can't say for certainty, because it hasn't like officially been announced, but the wheels are turning towards the opening of a hub here in Bennington. There is an, there is an organization who has been identified, and they have identified a property here in Bennington, is my understanding. A lot of it is, unfortunately, there is a lot of pieces that have to go through the Department of Health, and, you know, obviously, there's a lot of paperwork that's involved. So, they are, but they are proceeding, so I have had conversations with that, so it is looking very hopeful. If there was ever, obviously, if there was ever a time where we needed public support, you know, people to advocate for this, we would, you know, definitely look for that when the time comes. But the good news is, I can't name any names, but this is a very well-established program, and so I believe once they kind of, you know, put the open sign up, they should be able to kind of hit the ground running for us.
Great.
Park Adams Bennington, I have been a healthcare provider, pushing 45 years now, extensive exposure to people involved with use of narcotics. One of my major concerns, Narcan is a wonderful drug, you're absolutely right, like that, but going along with that comment you made, basically purity, you don't know what you're getting. Unfortunately, my experience, that people use Narcan, oh, they wake up, everything's fine. The half-life is very brief, and the drug they're using, you have no idea, the purity or the concentration. So a lot of people don't realize that within a half an hour, boom, you're back under again. And I think it's very important, people be educated that their friend or family member who uses Narcan, it's not enough. They need to seek definitive medical care as follow-up. Far too many people have been found passed away in their room hours later, but we gave them Narcan, and it looked good. That's not good enough. And I really think people need to get that through their head. Giving someone Narcan is emergency life-saving therapy. It is not definitive care for an opioid overdose. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Yes, Gary.
You said that where we were in southern Vermont had a high use, and that it was tied to where we're located, near Troy. Can you tell where the actual drugs are coming from?
I have had, so there's a, I do, I take part in meetings from the High Intensity Drug Traffic Agency of New England, and so they, this is an agency that kind of monitors this, and based on information I've received from them, fentanyl seems to come from New York City. And so, obviously, with, you know, you have the throughway right there, New York City links Albany and Troy, and then you jump on Route 7, you're in Bennington. It appears, and there's a new little, there's a new drug of concern, methamphetamines, which is essentially, you know, a stimulant drug, but can also be extremely lethal, seems to be coming from like the Boston area. So it, just because I think of our proximity to these two large cities, it finds its way to Bennington before sometimes, you know, other northern parts of the state.
Then I had one other question, which is, do these numbers point to any less use of drugs, or?
We are, unfortunately, I wouldn't, I would hesitate to say we're seeing less use of drugs. One of the other pieces that I did present here, just because I didn't want to swamp you with data, is we have non-fatal ED visits, which Bennington County continues to be pretty high in that area. So I would hesitate to say there's less use of drugs. I think there is, in terms of the fatal overdoses, I think there's more knowledge out there for people who are using of how to save lives, and obviously, you know, with the Narcan piece, yes. Our treatment numbers have been holding kind of steady, so even though I think we have potentially the same number of people kind of using, we still kind of have the same number of people in treatment, so I kind of keep an eye on that. I'm hopeful now that, you know, as kind of things start to open up, kind of, you know, hopefully, I don't knock on wood, kind of coming out of COVID, that we do see more people kind of enter into treatment, and I'm hopeful that the hub will be the thing that really kind of, you know, kind of brings some people back around, because I think there are people who have tried the spoke system, and suboxone is just not the medication for them. And like I said, going to Brattleboro every single day is just not an option, so I think when we have this level of care, or even UCS with like an alternate, just an alternate location, that... that I think that should hopefully, you know, get some more folks into treatment and get some more folks headed towards recovery.
Thank you.
Did you invite Margie?
Yeah, so Margie Diamond, she's with, like I said, the interim ED from Turning Point. And this, and what they do is absolutely a huge piece of the recovery model, so.
Yeah, thank you. Hi, I'm Margie Diamond. I'm the interim executive director for Turning Point. I live in Bennington. And as Todd was just saying, Turning Point is a helpful service with respect to the opioid crisis. We have managed a program for years now. We were one of the pilot programs when the state decided that having recovery coaches inside the hospital at an overdose would be helpful. And that they're seeing a rise in people taking up on treatment and staying in treatment when they have recovery coaches. That is not to say that we are a sponsor. We run recovery group meetings of all different kinds, AA and NA. But primarily, we're looking to provide people with peer support. We are all trained from the Recovery Academy of Vermont and motivational interviewing. We all hold certifications, certifications in recovery coaching as a practice. And of our staff, we have staff who are on 12-hour pagers. And when an overdose comes in, we get the call and we deploy a recovery coach down to the hospital. Sometimes people don't want to see us, and that's okay. We don't usually see people, obviously, until they've been stabilized. But we get a lot of people moved from the hospital into a recovery house, into a 28 or 30-day program because a peer coach has been there to talk to them and to encourage them. And as you just mentioned about Narcan, when people are Narcaned back, they are thrown into withdrawal immediately. And so the idea is that the Narcan has saved their life, but now they are itching, their body's on fire. And to have a recovery coach coming to the scene of an overdose, again, may not always help that person who has just revived because they are in complete crisis and shock. But we often are able to come to opioid overdoses through 911 dispatch and the police letting us know or rescue. That we go to those areas, whether it's Subway or Walmart or someone's home. And nine times out of 10, we get someone who's a bystander. The person who's overdosed is in shock, right? And they're not really sure what happened. But the people who saw it go down are also in shock and know that they need to make a change. And so having coaches present in these situations can really help to calm people, to provide a sense of direction and to give them a hand to hold along the way. It's a very scary journey for people, right? And we want to support it as much as possible. So that's something, a little bit on what we do in terms of how we support the hospital and also opioid response out in the community. Thank you.
Great. That's very helpful.
I'm just curious why you don't, why not?
Rose, come on up and introduce yourself.
I'm Rose Telford from North Bennington. I'm just curious why drinking is not, I mean, people can, yeah, they can go to work half drunk or whatever and all that. You gotta want to quit. My family, most of them are drunks. I made up my mind, there ain't no way it's ever gonna happen to me. But you gotta make up your mind, you can't just say, well, somebody just told me don't do it. Well, I made up my mind I wasn't gonna and I haven't, and I never will because I seen too much.
Actually, really, I mean, opioid use disorder is a big piece. I mean, just because of the, just the number of fatalities. But I mean, alcohol is also probably just as prevalent an issue, I would say. The good news is presently, SBMC's ED has, it's called the RAM program. It stands for Rapid Access to Medication. So a person can present to the emergency department and receive treatment for that in the emergency department setting. And then they arrange for that person to then go out to a spoke. The good news is, is they're going to be launching a similar program like that for alcohol. So a person can go up into the ED and then with the assistance of Turning Point. And also sometimes if the person wants to start, there are medications for alcohol use disorder, which actually are the same medications to some degree for opioid use disorder. They can be started on that. And the spoke system is now kind of geared up to treat alcohol use disorder as well. So there are people in spokes who are primarily alcohol use disorder who are receiving treatment there.
Great. Thank you.
Isn't it just as bad as if you were, you're just replacing it with something else? I guess that's what I want to say.
Yeah, I mean, the good, there are schools of thought. There are people who take an absence-only model and don't believe in Suboxone. There is research that suggests that for opioid use disorder, that's the way to save lives. So essentially the person is, they're not really taking this to get high anymore. They're basically taking Suboxone just to stop from getting sick. And so that's the whole idea is if you keep the people from getting sick, it'll actually keep them from kind of seeking out that fatal, that fatal dose.
If they weren't taking it, they wouldn't be sick.
I, yes.
That simple.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Because I'm just, I'm looking at the time and I know that Alex is coming back in a month. He's coming back August 22nd to talk some more on this topic. So this is not the last time that we'll cover it.
It's a pretty comprehensive thing to cover in this time, so we're hopefully bringing up into it too.
Nancy, it looks like you have a question. Come on up and then.
Nancy White. Are the groups working on the hub and spoke programs, are they going to be working with Bennington residents about the location of houses and offices? So we aren't surprised like we were last year with the recovery house across from the rec center?
Yeah, the spokes right now are essentially just, they're co-located in doctors' offices essentially. So it's not gonna, I wouldn't think of either of these as really a, they're not like a recovery residence that's going to be in your community. For the most part, these are located in business locations. So the spokes are already there. Chances are, if there's, just not to name them, but there's certain primary care offices that are also spokes. They don't really advertise it unless you're looking for it. But they're, they're already there. And as far as the hub goes, that would be also in a business location as well. So that wouldn't end up in, it wouldn't end in basically neighborhood.
So the building you're building in is in a commercial area?
Yes. Not me in particular, but the, but the agency that potentially will be opening in Bennington is looking in commercial, commercial locations.
Great. Todd, this was very, very informative. Thank you so much. Any last questions from the select board?
Yeah, Todd, would you be open to coming back in the fall when you have more to report?
Yeah, absolutely.
Great. Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So next up, we have the Bennington Police Department to talk to us about public safety. And I see Chief Doucette and I see Lieutenant Grandy. Floor is yours.
All right. Well, good evening. Thanks for having us here again. And thanks to the community for being here. There's a lot of people here. I was hoping you were all here for me, but we'll see. We, first I want to just start out by saying, you know, in listening to the last presentation, it's exciting. You know, we really feel like we have great partnerships with Southwest Vermont Healthcare, United Counseling Service and Turning Point. UCS and Turning Point have been amazing, boots on the ground, right next to the officers. They're out working with us right now, in fact, or a representative is out working with us right now. So I think it's, I think it's important that the community realize how important they are to us and what we're trying to do in this community to keep the community safe. So kudos to all of you. So I know that there's been some intense things happening in Bennington over the last six months. Before we get into that, I just want to talk about a couple of other things that are public safety related that are important, both to the residents in Bennington and North Bennington. In the last couple of months, traffic safety has been a huge concern for many people, both in Bennington and North Bennington. Lieutenant Grandy and I have had the opportunity to meet with folks from Bennington and North Bennington to discuss traffic safety issues. And it appears as though the community members want us to go out and issue more tickets. And we are, we are slowly working on that with our staffing levels. We are really focused on trying to do many things here in the community, both community policing and keeping the community safe from issues that we're going to talk about. So again, we're really doing what we can. If you do have issues in your neighborhood, we do ask that you visit our website. You can send Lieutenant Grandy and I an email about speeding issues or stop sign issues. And we will do our best to put people in those neighborhoods to make things happen for you. It really isn't all about writing tickets, but there's, we seem to be getting a lot of requests for tickets and not warnings. And that is an officer discretion thing. And, but we are more than happy to come and enforce traffic safety laws when time permits. I also want to announce one last time because it is coming up on August 2nd of this year. Up at Willow Park, the Bennington Police Department will be partnering with the Fire Department and the Highway Department and our, some of our community partners to have National Night Out. You'll have an opportunity to come and meet with some of the officers and firefighters and people that work for the Highway Department. We're gonna do some grilling. We're gonna make some cotton candy and Sarah's gonna teach me how to do that. We're gonna make some popcorn and we're gonna play some games. And, you know, our popsicle trailer will be there and it will be loaded to the hilt. And this year we added backpack giveaways. We do have several backpacks. We plan to put school supplies in those and we're encouraging people to come and visit with us and have some fun with us. So August 2nd, we'll start at 5:30 and we'll go until 7:30. And I'll just throw out a shout-out for Heritage Family Credit Union. They did, they did provide us with some funding for this to make it possible, so.
Is it at Willow, Willow?
I'm sorry, Willow Park, yes. Lower Willow, at the pavilion. Yeah, we'll have some fun, I promise. So I want to, I want to really touch base with all of you. I know that there's a lot of concern about some of the violence that we've been seeing in Bennington. And the violence is really something that, over the last six months, we've experienced quite a bit of. We've had some drive-by shootings. We've had a couple of stabbings. We've had some other significant assaults in different neighborhoods. It's not all in the same neighborhood. We are definitely seeing an uptick in what we call gang and drug-related violence in and around Bennington. I know people don't like to hear the word gang, but in all honesty, our investigations do show that we do have some gang-related activity in Bennington. These gang affiliations are hailing out of the state of Massachusetts. They've been operating in and around Bennington. They're not just in Bennington. They're in surrounding communities as well. This information that we've developed is credible, that there are three separate gangs that are attempting to gain foothold in Bennington and for obvious reasons. There's three big factors that come into play when you think about the gang activity and some of the things that we're seeing. It really revolves around money, guns and drugs. And, and not necessarily in that order. And specifically right now, we have a problem with people that are purchasing firearms, that are able to purchase firearms. They can fill out a 4473, legally obtain a firearm, and then they trade that for their choice of drugs. We're also seeing Vermont residents that are purchasing firearms for prohibited persons, someone who's convicted of a felony or dishonorably discharged or one of the criteria that when you fill out the 4473, which is a federal form to purchase a firearm, if you answer yes to that question, you cannot have a firearm. And we have people that are doing that. That is why we are working with our federal partners in order to, and bring charges at the federal level in a different court. So we can get back to that if there's questions on that. But I want to share that with you, that we are working towards a common goal with our state, local and federal partners. Things that we're seeing here, we touched on it. We are starting to see a little bit of methamphetamine here and it is pretty scary. And, but we're also seeing heroin, we're seeing fentanyl, cocaine, crack and marijuana. And I don't want to dive too deep into the marijuana piece, but what our concerns are, which you've already heard about tonight, is marijuana that has been laced with fentanyl. We've seen some overdoses as a result of people smoking marijuana that's either laced with fentanyl or powdered cocaine. And for people that just regularly use marijuana, that is obviously a complete shock to their system. So as far as the violence goes, the violence that we're seeing, it's happening as a result of this, of drug debt. People that owe money to some of the people that are dealing. And really, it's a turf battle between three different groups. Some of our, of our drive-by shootings, most recently on Main Street by the Lonergan and Thomas Building, are being reported by concerned citizens. It's very rare that we get a call from someone whose home has been shot into because obviously they, for their, for their own peace of mind, they choose not to cooperate with the police. And they choose not to make that report. So it's really not uncommon for victims not to report. But through, you know, we have been successful with some of our investigations in making sure that we are able to make arrests. There's been some excellent police work. And I really want to thank members of the community that have been involved in assisting the police. Because really, the community are our eyes and ears. You know, we don't have law enforcement out all over the place all of the time. And we really need the community to make these reports. You can make reports by calling 911. You can call the 802-442-1030 number. But the bottom line is, is, you know, if you're gonna make the report, it's best to call when it's happening. Sometimes people take information and they'll go to our website at www.benningtonpolice.com and they'll put the information into our website and that's not monitored 24/7. And so we need to make sure that, that if you are seeing something, that you're reporting that. And that's, that's really an important piece for us. Because we, you know, it's difficult. For example, on Main Street, it was reported right away and we were able to collect shell casings. And we are working diligently at making an arrest on that. So with that being said, sometimes there are misconceptions in the community about the police department and the things that we can and cannot do. We conduct investigations. We do make arrests. Offenders go to court and they may be released. That's one of the things that we hear the most from people is, well, how the hell did they get out? And the bottom line is, is, you know, once, once, once people are transported to court, you know, the police are not responsible for what happens after an arraignment. People do get arraigned. Depends on their ties to the community. It depends on where they live, where they're from. And sometimes bail is not imposed and we release people on release conditions. And when I say we, that's the judiciary. It's not we, the Bennington Police. We don't, we just really can't, we can't just simply lock people up. You know, it doesn't work like that. And what ends up happening is we have to abide by Vermont law. And there are legislative rules that are in place that we have to follow. And I know it's frustrating. I know it's frustrating after you've called the police and provided the police with information for two months about drug dealing at a house down the road. And then the police come and they execute a search warrant. And then, you know, three days later, the people are right back out. And we try our best to monitor that. So, you know, Lieutenant Grandy and I were, have been talking over the weekend and talked again today. And, and, you know, we want to just tell all of you, the Bennington Police Department, state police, Manchester Police, we can't do this alone. And we need help from, from the community. We need the community to support law enforcement. We need you to provide us with information. We need you to tell us what's going on. Investigations take time. You know, we all watch these crazy television shows where, you know, and let's see, take out the 20 minutes of commercials. So in 40 minutes, Gibbs on NCIS solves a couple of homicides and interdicts a couple of boatloads of heroin or whatever it might be. That's not how it happens in the real world. I mean, some of these investigations take months and months. Meanwhile, you get frustrated and you say to yourself, well, what are the police doing? What's taken so long? We're trying to build a case. We're trying to make it solid. So many loopholes. You know, so many things that people can say, oh, it wasn't me. It's not mine. You know, I picked up somebody that was hitchhiking, you know, a thousand bags of heroin, it must be theirs. So, you know, we need to make sure that we're, we're focused on helping the police. It is easy to criticize the police. It's easy to criticize the select board. And it's easy to criticize the town manager. But until you've done what we do, we ask that you please continue to support the police and provide us with information. Our legislators, both at the state and federal level, regardless of their political affiliations, really need to work together. If we're gonna start solving some of the problems in this country and in this state and in this and in this community, we need to start working together, right? It doesn't matter if you're red or blue, or if you're an independent, or what the story may be, we have to create enforceable laws, and we need to provide funding so that we can fund needed programs. We've heard all about some great programs today. Again, I'm going to say it one more time, we love the hospital, we love UCS, Turning Point is just amazing, and comes out and helps us. And together, we work towards our common goals, which really is to keep the community safe. And our legislators have to understand the constraints that they place on law enforcement. You know, some of this activity that we're seeing out of Massachusetts involves kids that are 14, 15, 16-year-olds, coming to our community, waving around 9mm handguns, pointing them at people, you know, firing rounds, and you know, we struggle with juvenile holding facilities. And listen, I am not a fan of locking everyone up, I'm not, but at the same time, we have to detain people and hold them, you know, while investigations are underway, and we need to keep our community safe. And if that means that we have to detain somebody for a long period of time, then that's what we have to do. Think about some of the things that we've already heard about tonight. Addiction. Addiction treatment is absolutely desperately needed in the state of Vermont. We have to get people the help that they need. That is going to solve issues for us. Mental health issues in Vermont in the last couple of years have definitely increased. And what we see is people that have mental health issues, they go and they look for and seek out alternatives to help them with their issues. And we see people using illicit narcotics. That's a problem. You know, Gene, your question about fentanyl, synthetic heroin, you know, was right on target. People don't understand what they're messing with when they start using fentanyl. As he said, you know, we have a situation where you take your bag, you dump it out, you put it in your spoon, you cook it up, maybe that little bit of fentanyl is still on the corner of the bag. So, the next bag, as he said, you take the whole thing, you dump it out, because you didn't get what you were looking for from the first bag, and you overdose. You know, it's really a problem. It's a dangerous drug, people don't understand. You know, there was, I love the point about Narcan and Naloxone. That is something that Lieutenant Randy and I talked about immediately prior to coming here, because he wanted to make sure that I talked to all of you. Every search warrant we conduct, there's Narcan or Naloxone. We're stopping cars, we're looking through cars, we find Narcan and Naloxone. And, you know, we've made it easy for people to obtain, which is a good thing in some cases, but at the same time, you know, we have to make sure that people are getting the treatment that they need after the use of Narcan or Naloxone. It's so important. And we've already talked about the effects of opiates, and so I'm not going to get back into that, but we need to make sure that we have peer counselors, we need to make sure that we're going to the hospital and doing our best. If you have family members, if you have friends that overdose, you know, simply using Narcan or Naloxone is not the answer. They have to have treatment after the fact. Our officers are trained and have been for years, and we've been carrying Narcan or Naloxone since 2017, December of 2017. Officer Amanda Knox was the first officer at the Bennington Police Department to deploy Narcan to save a life, January of 2018. We use it on occasion. Now, we're using Narcan or Naloxone on a weekly basis, sometimes on a daily basis as the epidemic continues. So, how do we curb some of the violent crime that we're seeing? We have, there has to be a reduction. There has to be a reduction in the use of illicit narcotics, to include the fentanyl and the heroin and everything that's associated with it. You know, if we see a decrease in drug use, I firmly believe that we're going to see a decrease in drug-related crime. This is a national problem. It's not a problem that's just associated with Bennington or southern Vermont. You know, fortunately, you know, we live in a great community. Unfortunately, we're very close to New York City, and we're very close to Springfield and Holyoke. You know, the question's going to come, well, what part of Massachusetts? So, there, I gave it to you, right? So, we're seeing the activity come out of Springfield and Holyoke. That's why it's important that we're working with the Mass. State Police and the Vermont State Police and our federal partners, so that we can try to curb some of this activity. With this national epidemic, we really need to stop accessibility and the demand, and we need to provide treatment facilities, we need to provide programs, and peer recovery is key. We all know that when you're addicted to the opiates, it's very easy to slip. And I think that with peer recovery coaching and peer recovery teams, and working with United Counseling Service to have people get the services that they need with clinicians, you know, coupled with medications, that's what's really going to work to help us solve some of the issues that we're seeing. We can go and we can continue to conduct search warrants and arrest people and try to keep our community safe, but until we have an overhaul of the criminal justice system in this country, it's really not going to work. Keeping the Bennington community safe is key, and is our number-one goal at the Bennington Police Department. Working together with the Bennington County State's Attorney's Office and with our federal partners, again, the hospital and UCS and Turning Point in this area is really where it's at, and that's what's going to help us solve some of the issues that we have here. We have to sit down at the table, we have to do this together, and we have to make sure that our community is safe. The violent crimes are very disturbing. They're not just happening in Bennington, please don't think that they are, they're happening in communities in and around Bennington. And working together, we, you know, we're doing our best to keep the community safe. But again, we need your help. We need your help at home, and we need people to report these incidents so that we can have a safer community.
Great, thank you very much. Can you entertain some questions?
I would absolutely love to entertain some questions.
Lovely, okay, we'll start with the Select Board, and I believe that Bruce is ready to go.
I am ready to go. Hi, Chief, I'm glad you're entertaining.
Good evening.
Questions? I appreciate you're talking about the context in which we all live, the context of southern Vermont, but also the context, the larger context of the opioid epidemic that's all around us. Many of us may live in some places, or live as if we don't ever see it, but it's all around us. One of the places you touched on, but I would like a little bit more help with, is the issue of juveniles, particularly those under the age of 21, who are coming in and are taking in offenses. Has there been an uptick in that since Vermont changed its juvenile age law regarding detention?
There, in fact, there has been, and what I'm going to do, because the last time I was here, my good friend Lieutenant Randy did not get up to the microphone, and I'm going to let him answer the question about juveniles, just so we can share the podium.
That's just because you talk a lot. Like the Chief said, yes, we've seen an uptick in juvenile involvement in the drug activity and the violence. So, free to answer your question, the, this is a business, straight up, it's a business. And the business leaders that are sending these juveniles to Vermont know our laws, and they understand our laws, and they know that they need to get them back out in the street quickly. So, they know that they're not going to be held on some of these crimes. So, they get arrested, and they're right back out on the street and back in business. So, yes.
So, if I'm hearing you correctly, one of the things that we as the Select Board could do, or we as individuals could do, would be to communicate with our state legislators or the candidates who are running even now for their positions, about looking at the way in which we have sort of given that sort of blanket, walking out of custody issue, except for the Big 12, and unfortunately, drug sales is not one of the Big 12.
Trafficking narcotics is not part of the Big 12, and that's what we're seeing. We're seeing 16- and 17-year-old, 18-year-old kids coming here, participating in this very, very volatile business, dangerous, dangerous business, and yeah, they're right back out on the street very, very quickly. There isn't a place, even if they're coming, even if they're coming across state lines and they don't have any ties to your Vermont, it does not keep them in custody.
Thank you.
I want to just add to that, what we're also seeing is, if you're a juvenile, it's like when you had to go to the principal's office, you get sent home, right, and you're told, do this, do this, do this. But we're sending these kids back home out of state, and they're told not to come back to Vermont unless it's for court, and then we see them again. So, the release conditions don't work, and as Lieutenant told you, you know, the people that are running these businesses understand, and that's why they're using the juveniles, and they're easy to control, so.
Right, thank you.
Other questions? Gary?
Are these juveniles that are coming across, or any of these people, are they bringing their guns with them? Are they getting their guns here? You talked about people buying guns for them. Are the laws in Massachusetts, New York, Vermont similar?
So, multiple parts there. So, let me start with, these kids are bringing guns with them. I mean, we've seen Glock 17s with 33-round stick mags hanging out of the bottom of them, fully loaded, and you know, magazine capacity now in Vermont is, for handgun, is 15 rounds. So, you know, they're bringing these guns with them, but at the same time, they're also bringing up their illicit narcotics and they're trading. They're finding people that are 21-years-old or older to go to a gun store and actually make a purchase, and then they make a trade. That's why it's great working with the Department of Homeland Security, we're able to backtrack, and there are several cases pending right now that are going to be coming out of Bennington for the trade of guns for illicit narcotics.
Other questions? Any questions from the public? Yes, Clark?
Oh, I'm sorry, sir.
Good to see you guys again. Clark out of Bennington. I take note that you mentioned your federal partners as part of your process. Is there any thought, or has there been any action toward charging these juveniles under the federal laws? You know, down where I used to live in Connecticut, that's actually what it took to break the back of, you know, some of the local drug lords is, everything they did was turned over to the feds. And, you know, even the local officers were sworn, there's federal officers, so when they arrested drug traffickers in their cohorts, boom, you know, they were looking not only at federal charges, but federal charges and no bail. And I appreciate what you said about the requirements for our elected officials to help us do the heavy lifting, but that's the first thing that pops to mind to me is, where are the federal people in terms of charging? It sounds like you're interstate trafficking of firearms, interstate trafficking of narcotics, a lesser charge of, you know, creating juvenile delinquents, all those things. Where are the feds?
That's a fantastic question. We are working with our federal partners right now on the very topic, and using the federal system to identify and cases that have that nexus to interstate travel as well as drugs, narcotics, and money. We are working with Homeland Security daily on that topic. We have two Bennington Police Officers who are currently, have been deputized and taken all the required training to assist federal law enforcement within the state and across state lines. So, yes, we are exploring that and actually working on that. We have a couple of cases right now in front of the U.S. Attorney.
Sam?
Sam Mercino from Bennington, Vermont. I got a lot of statements. I kept hearing the word "help, help." You got help. You got me, and you got the citizens of Bennington. I don't know if you're familiar with the Facebook page, what's going on, where people report of instances that's going on? I don't know if it's against the law or not, or we report what's going on through the scanner, and instances that are going on. I'm encouraging people to sit there to get to you. You guys have done a lot. It's not your problem, it's the state. You spoke about teenagers. The worst thing I've heard in the state of Vermont is the DCF. We don't even have facilities to house teenagers, and I know I'm speaking to the choir here. We need to get those facilities. That young individual that pistol-whipped somebody, I don't know if I've got liberty to say about this, it's been in the papers, Glass and Berry. There's not going to be one isolated situation, there's going to be a lot of them out there. Foster care, when you think of foster care, you think six, or seven, or eight, or nine-year-olds. It's the teens. You got to push on foster cares. Who wants to sit there and take in a troubled teen?
So, Sam?
Years ago, in 1970, there was teens to be taken in, and it was love. It takes a village, it takes a community, and you're going to get that help, because I'm going to sit, are you in favor of Neighborhood Watch? We used to have the Catalyst here.
Yeah, let's talk about this, we'll go one step at a time.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, yeah.
So, thank you, Sam. So, listen, we, you know, we're not about, we're not about bashing our state partners. DCF, Department of Children and Families, they have a tough job, they really do. They work hard at trying to find placements. You know, foster care is not just about, as Sam said, it's not just about a two-year-old who needs a place to stay, or a 10-year-old whose mom and dad can't control them, mom or dad or both. It really is a tough situation, and you know, I cannot speak for the Department of Children and Families, but I do know that they're short-staffed, just like the Police Department, and they are working hard to help us when we ask. And we do consider them, Sam, we do consider them a partner, and you know, in fact, when we work drug cases, Erica Marthage makes sure that DCF knows what's going on if there's children involved. So, again, tough position to be in, and you know, I think that's important. As far as Neighborhood Watches and that question, we do support people in the communities telling us what's going on. Be careful and make sure you read the guidelines and the laws on Neighborhood Watches. If you form a Neighborhood Watch, you have to have a law enforcement officer at your meetings, and this is not about being a vigilante. It's about reporting things that you see and making sure that the Police Department knows what's going on. So, we definitely are not encouraging people to be vigilantes, and you know, if you want to, if you want to have, listen, we've had, we've had a few community meetings now where people come in and meet with the Lieutenant or I, one or both, or they meet with other officers from the Bennington Police Department if we're not available. We are happy to sit down and discuss one-on-one, or you know, 10-on-one, or if we need a big room like this, I could make that happen with, of course, the manager's permission. So, yes, ma'am?
Hi, I'm Karen Urban, and I live in Bennington. The first thing is, I would like to thank you both for both coming here and for the jobs that you do. I cannot imagine a harder job than a project team in Bennington. I would also like to briefly say that I hope that the Select Board and all of the community people that are here today, UCS, Turning Point, we desperately need a hub in this town. We have a terrible problem, and we need help right now, as soon as possible. We have to get something going here. The fact that Turning Point can go up to the hospital now and meet with people who are willing to go to recovery is terrific, but we need sober houses, safe places for people to live before they can get into treatment. The last time I checked, it was weeks before someone could get into treatment. That is when people fall. We have to figure out, Brattleboro is inadequate, it's too far away, it's inadequate. Serenity House is too small. Maple Leaf is closed. That's it in the whole state. We have to, is that not true? We have to do something about getting people help that are willing to get it, and not telling them to go sit down and behave and everything will be cool in three weeks. They can't wait that long. In changing the topic a little bit, something else popped in my head. I hope to God that you guys have a plan if there is a school shooter.
We do, and I think maybe that could, whoop, sorry, see? You got me too excited. So, not about a school shooting. We actually do have a plan, and we do, we do train the plan, and in fact, we just bought some new equipment under the town manager's direction, and working with Lieutenant Randy and our firearms instructors, we're... with Lieutenant Grandy and our firearms instructors, we're actually going to be stepping that up. And we do actually have a plan in place. Just recently met with Kevin Daly and Tom D. from the hospital and getting some space where we can train. And it's just, you know, you are right, and it's a very scary topic. I'd love to come back because I know Ms. Jenkins is going to say to me, "Time to move on, Chief Doucette." And, but the bottom line is, is that I would love to come back and talk about our active shooter response and show you some of the equipment that we have so that the community is aware. So maybe we can plan that for down the road, and we can actually do some demos in here that will not hurt anyone. So if you'd like to see that at a Select Board meeting, Lieutenant Grandy and I will bring some people here and we'll make it happen so that people can see. Right, Lieutenant Grandy?
No demos.
No demos. We'll have a demo because I said so. So, the bottom line is, is it's an excellent point, and we, you know, we're happy. We have been working with the Vermont Department of Health doing active shooter training, and, you know, some of the stuff that you see at Southwest Tech is our department working with Mr. Lawler over there and at the hospital, working with all of the principals that have been there recently, and Christina Gabris, the office assistant there, office manager, rather. So, you know, there's a lot going on in our schools, and we would love to come back and talk about that another time.
Well, we would appreciate you doing so.
I just want to like take 30 seconds on that topic because I know that's on a lot of people's minds, especially what's happening in other parts of the country with law enforcement not acting as quick as they probably should. But the chief has sent us, our officers, some of the best training in this country from a team approach, a small-team approach, and a single officer approach. If something like that were to happen, we are going to handle it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we are, we, yes, we are, we have time for a few more questions. Please come on up. Some person in the back, and they say we have one more hand. This is an important topic, and again, it's not, we will make sure that our chief and lieutenant come back and talk with us in the not-too-mysterious future.
First thing I would like to do is, to just be raised more, or made it louder because it's very difficult. I have my ear aids on and I can't hear back there. Especially some people who tend to be like over here talking, you know?
Yes, you can just speak directly.
But if you could sort of open that up so we could hear people. I don't know if everybody had that same problem, but I know I did. This is Stan Giannowski. I live in Bennington, and I did, was very much happy and unhappy to hear that there are three street gangs in Bennington. That is what you just said, right? And that is very, very serious as far as I'm concerned, and I'm sure you are too because you've already stated that. And one question I would have is, and then we can go on further, is, we talked about Springfield and Holyoke, and then there's mentioning about fentanyl, 90-something percent is coming in from fentanyl evidently. And that's, and the discussion was that it was from New York City and in Boston. And so my question is, where are these juveniles coming from? You say they're from the area, but where is the area? Where are these gangs, young children? I agree. There's a problem. It is young people. Where are they coming from? Are they coming, are they also coming from Skidnack City, for instance? Albany area? No one ever mentions that area. They always talk New York City. And so, when we had these so-called violent situations going on here, were they caused by street gangs? Was that street gang trying to take turf, or was something else? Where is it coming from?
So, as I mentioned earlier, the gang activity that we're seeing here locally is coming out of Springfield, Massachusetts, and Holyoke, Massachusetts.
So there's three, three groups coming out of that area?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay.
All right. And we have, we have in the past seen drugs come out of Troy and Albany, but a majority of what we're seeing right now is coming from western Massachusetts. And that's where the young folks are coming from, out of western Massachusetts. And several of these people, to go a little bit further with it, several of these people actually have criminal records involving drugs and guns in the state of Massachusetts.
Okay. Okay, and so you have identified the name, you know the gangs? Not individuals, you know the gangs?
That's correct.
You know the gangs?
That's correct.
And, and so far in your investigation, have you found game number one versus number two involved in the incidents?
Yes.
It is?
Yes.
Okay. I want the board and the community to know that is very serious. Remember, you see this happens in big cities, Chicago, that it's very tough to deal with it in Chicago. It's not going to be easy for you to be able to solve this problem. It is.
So, so one of the, that's one of the reasons why we need help in communicating with our legislators that represent us in Malpelear, and we need help with our legislators that represent Vermont in Washington, DC. And at the same time, you know, we need UCS, we need the hospital, we need a hub, and we need to get people treatment so that we can help curb some of these addictions. Where there's demand, there's supply, right? I did not major in business, although sometimes I wish I had, because I think it's important that people understand that, you know, supply and demand, supply and demand. So they'll keep coming here if we have a demand. If we get people the help that they need, it will reduce, and hopefully they'll go back on their merry way and go back to some community that is not around Bennington. So.
All right, I think we've got two more questions, you and then, okay?
Yeah, Ned Perkins, Bennington. I just want to thank the police. You guys have been terrific. And when we've needed you, you've responded and done the right thing. So, I guess, I just kind of have a rhetorical question, which is, we're hearing we have these big needs, you know, we need funding, we need to address the catch-and-release laws. What can we do? You know, I know this Select Board, you can't pass an ordinance and change those. We can't just change it. But we have a bully pulpit, and we have legislators. We've got the chairman of the Judiciary Committee, he's our state senator. What is the Select Board and what can all of us in Bennington do to reach out to these people to address these issues, to get funding, to reach out to Senator Leahy, to Bernie Sanders? You know, these people say they're here, but where are they? I never see them come to town.
So Ned, I think that's an excellent question, and I do think the success we've had in this past year with Pathways Vermont, working with our delegation, has really shown that they are responsive. So I think, I mean, to Kelly's question earlier about how can we advocate for a hub here, and to the questions you're raising now, I think the more we understand about exactly what it is we can advocate for with our delegation, the more successful we can be.
I worry, you know, without-
But yeah, it will take the entire-
You know, without having a mayor, you know, we don't have one leader. So it's all of you and all of us.
Well, it's all of us. It's all of us, yeah.
Right, and, but, you know, it makes it hard. So.
Well, honestly, I think it is going to be a community response, so, and it looks like the chief maybe has something that he wants to suggest.
So I do, Ned, thank you so much. It means a lot. You helped Jeannie steal my thunder for the end. I do, I did want to mention Pathways Vermont. We talked about it. Pathways Vermont is so important, and in working with our legislators, we were able to, you know, the funding was there, and then it was gone, and then it came back, and it took a few emails and some meetings. And in all honesty, all I did was email. These guys really took care of all that, and the community needs to know that. Transitional housing is so important. You know, these people need a chance. They have to, they have to get their treatment, they have to get their counseling, and they need a chance. And that's so important if we're going to solve the problems in this community. And like I said, supply and demand, these people get a chance. Pathways Vermont, transitional housing, key to the success of what we're trying to do. I wanted to end it on a positive note, but Jeannie beat me to it, but it is important that we all understand that.
That's good. That's good. Yes, you, yes, you were up, and then Kelly, and then all, we need to move on.
My name is Mike Ball from Bennington. We've had a lot of, a big string of break-ins and, you know, vehicles engaged straight a lot. Yesterday, I noticed my car was rummaged through. We went through our security cameras, we saw people coming from Pratt Street, which I'm assuming, you know, that's Pratt, Scott, Pleasant areas. We watched one guy go through all of the cars on Maple Street, just checking every door, every window was unlocked, they'd go in, do their thing, and leave. We just don't know if there's any, is there any monitoring going on, or?
There is the, I'll jump on that. So basically what's happening is the officers at night are checking and patrolling. We're also collecting digital evidence from ring doorbells and things like that, people that have cameras. We did recently make an arrest, and the person has been detained. We had a lot of problems with one individual. It was nonstop. People in the community were getting angry, and there was a lot of businesses issuing trespass notices, and, you know, we were finally able to apprehend the individual, and he has been detained at the correctional facility. So I understand where you're coming from, but again, that goes right along with what we're talking about is, you know, and I'm not, I'm not looking for a debate. We got to lock our cars, right? And we got to make sure that we don't keep valuables out in our cars. That's not solving the problem, but what is solving the problem is everything that we've already talked about tonight, because we know what people are doing, right? They're going through the cars, they're looking for money, they're looking for valuables that they can sell or trade, and so, yeah, so if you've got stuff on video, we'd love to have it.
And where do we send that? That's another question.
So, I'll meet-
We have tons of footage.
Yep, I'll meet with you as soon as we're done here.
Love to send you that footage.
Absolutely.
All right. Thank you. One last question, Kelly. You were it.
Kelly Carroll, Bennington, and I just want to say to the people who've said, like, "What can we do? What can we do?" And I know that I asked that question, but you do need to get involved, and you do need to let our Vermont legislators know. And I'm going to tell you, we got a really great delegation locally, but we really need to look at the state, because when you look at the important committees like Healthcare Committee in Vermont and the House Representatives, there are six members from Chittenden County, and there are none from down here. And I watched that testimony when they talked about Pathways for here, and two of the members on that healthcare committee actually didn't want to do anything because we are physically located next to Massachusetts and New York, and they're afraid that a resident might get services that should go to a Vermonter. So don't be afraid just to contact our delegation. Take a look at the healthcare committees up north, the judiciary committee, corrections, all of that, and make them realize that we're here in Bennington, because if we don't advocate for ourselves down here, they're not going to remember that we're here. So anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. So outstanding point from Kelly Carroll there. Maybe she should run for office, all kidding aside. She's been a fantastic supporter of the police and the Select Board and making things happen up north. That is, that really is, that is our time, right, Cam? But the bottom line is, is please, 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 there's a lot of legislators not seeking reelection. Know who you're voting for. Visit their websites, visit with them, email them. If they don't get back to you now, they're not going to get back to you when they're in office, you know? And a lot of things happen up north, not a lot of things happen down here, and Kelly is 100% correct. They were so afraid about New York and Massachusetts. You know what? We're part of Vermont. They take, well, we won't go there, still get a second. Bottom line is, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
I like my job.
Thank you to the Bennington Police Department. All right, next up is the emergency health order for 105107 Spring Street, and Paul Danzrow is here to talk with us about that.
Good evening. Paul Danzrow, Director of Facilities, Building Inspector, Fire Marshal, and Deputy Health Officer.
Can I stop you one second? If anyone wants to have a conversation, please move it to the hallway. The acoustics in here are terrible. Okay, sorry, Paul.
No problem. Appreciate the opportunity tonight. Select Board, you were given an advance packet with a document prepared on last Wednesday. Purpose of it is just to provide a Select Board an upgrade, or excuse me, an update on the 105107 Spring Street emergency health order that was prepared in late June. The emergency health order was prepared on June 24th, was sent via certified mail to the owner of record for the property of 105107 Spring Street. The owner of record is the Wilmington Savings and Fund Society, FSB. Specifically, the order was for the garbage, trash, debris piled on the porch in the side yard, backyard, front yard of the property that's providing road and harborage, as well as creating health hazard, as well as for the front porch that was collapsing and could pose a public health hazard. Just want to point out to the board, as of the time when I prepared this, we had not been contacted at our office, but as of today, though, we were contacted by an attorney firm representing Wilmington Savings and Fund Society, and they are here tonight as well. Also today, we were informed at our office and verified that a former tenant had actually started cleaning the property. So some trash has been removed from the front yards, and you do see an improvement, however, there's still a significant amount of garbage, trash, debris in the yard. What I'd like tonight is just for the Select Board, if they agreed for a motion just to reaffirm, you know, to affirm this emergency health order, put this in place. Also, just to inform the board, a separate action that had been started on this property was through the zoning violations for the same garbage, trash, et cetera, and debris. A, excuse me, as part of the emergency health order, you saw the notice of violation that was prepared for that, which was dated February 1st. That action has also processed through where a motion was filed with environmental court in April of '22. Then May 3rd of '22, after, no action after it was filed, it was served upon the owner of record. They had until May 24th to respond. Nothing was done at that point, and then June 6th, our town's attorney requested default judgment for that order. Since that was being delayed, that's when the emergency health orders put in effect because we did not know how soon that was going to be actioned on. The only reason I bring up is as of July 7th, the environmental court issued the default judgment order on that action as well. So that is now in place, and is going through its proceedings, but I still think it's prudent that we proceed with an emergency health order, have that also in place, but the more, the, excuse me, I'm not going to say more, in fact, but the other judgment order that we just received will be a more powerful agent to address the issues, but I still think it's worthwhile to go through and proceed with the emergency health order.
So what is the process here? Should we make a motion? Should we hear from?
I would recommend if there, I mean, yes, I'm the newest one to really attend to a lot of your Select Board meetings. If you go, if it's a motion, then a discussion, that might be a time to go and answer questions.
Okay, so let's-
That's what I was going to suggest. Yes, I would, I would move that the Select Board tonight affirm the emergency health order dated sev-
6 June.
6 June.
Oh, excuse me, excuse me. June, 6/24, sorry.
6, yes.
6/24.
Right. 6/24/22.
Great, thank you. Is there a second? Okay, Jim seconded. Any discussion?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'll be very brief. I'm not going to, oh, I apologize. My name is Attorney Adam Avalone. My last name is A, V as in Victor, A-L-L-O-N-E. I'm with Bendett McHugh, with offices here in Vermont, Connecticut, Massachusetts, all of New England. I'm not here to disagree with anything that the deputy health officer has notified you of. I agree. Today, I became aware of the environmental court order, which does impose a per diem, a daily fine, you know, subject to these matters being remedied. My client is willing to undertake whatever it needs to do, to clean the property, to get it in a state of good use and approved by the town, so we can, so we can stop the bleeding, so to say, on the per diem order. My client's- My client's only concern going forward is, you know, whether or not someone is actually living in the property. We had discussions while I was driving here with the town attorney who informs us that no one is in the property. So perhaps based on that, we, we may either undertake to clean the property right away or my client may want to get just an order from a Vermont Superior Court judge allowing us to go and do this order in addition to the, the blight penalty, excuse me, that are being imposed. But other than that, my client intends to fully cooperate. We don't want any properties in disrepair in Bennington or anywhere else. We intend to fully comply and work with the town to resolve the issues.
How long has your client known about the condition of the property? Since February?
They, they received, I believe, a letter. I can't say when they received it, but.
Paul. Notice of violation was sent on, sorry, November 9th, November 9th, 2021, notice violation was prepared by our office, sent certified mail. It was signed for with a receipt copy, so not sure.
What is the per diem fine on it? You know, what's the amount?
The environmental court issued a fine of $15 per day that, as well as the attorney fees of $1,700 in some sense. I didn't find the exact, or find the exact.
So, you know, here's, I'm going to be quite frank with you. Your client has known about this since November and between that time and now, nothing's been done. And he's, you're coming to, or you're coming to us on his behalf, asking for favors when the condition of that property is so clear that because it's in proximity to other properties, I wish you could see that, not only has it, you know, created a hazard in that neighborhood, but it's affected adjacent property owners' property values. And you come in here asking for favors?
I haven't made any formal request for relief from this, this panel or any others. I, I can't tell the, the board, however, that Vermont law does require a 90-day notice for any potential, any potential tenants of a foreclosed property. It's a 90-day notice and that's statutory. So we're required to send these notices, wait the 90 days to see whether or not anyone comes out of the woodwork and claims to be a bona fide tenant. So that, that is the primary cause for delay in this matter.
So 90 days from November puts us at February?
February.
February 1st. 90 days from February 1st.
February. Madam Chair? I, I realize you're not asking for anything. I just want that property cleaned up and, and I'm going to ask that you speak to your client and, and make sure that that property is as, you, you do not need a court order now to, to get in. There is, you've been assured that there is nobody there living. You can get in there. You're, I, I do not believe you need it, but if you, if you want to take on the $15, you're still sticking the neighbors with that and that's the problem. Okay?
And I wish, sir, that every time someone told me a property was vacant and abandoned and our client went in to secure the property, which is the right under the mortgage, we were never sued after that. I wish that was the case, but that hap-
And you and I both know that it's not about whether you're going to be sued. We all know that, you know, I'm a lawyer too. We, we all know that we're going to get sued, but that's not the problem. The problem here is the condition of that property, which your, which your client actually maintained in that condition because they knew about it since November.
Okay.
Okay? Yeah. Is, is, are we allowed to give your client a deadline? He has one. What is it?
He has one and it's on by 15.
Well, I'm saying a new deadline.
We, we have a monetary judgment that is measured on a per diem basis as well as attorney's fees and costs.
So, okay. I think, Dan, I'm going to let you go next. All right. And then Robert, I'll get to you.
Sorry, just to.
Just to let you know, we have your issue with that.
Yep.
Sorry, just a quick clarification. November, that November, sorry, that November notice of violation that was issued to the previous owner, all right? When, once that actually was started, but then we found out the owner's changed FSB, which was February, so a new notice of violation was issued. Just, just clarifying a point, but it was since February that I believe their clients knew about. Now, then, but the second thing is with the, with the court, or excuse me, with the environmental court judgment order that's been put in place, once we have confirmation that was served upon the client, there was five days for the client to take an action, try to bring it to full compliance. At the end of that five day, we have the full authorities to do a cleanup on that property. What we're waiting, as we'll say, we're in our office, we're just waiting to see if we had confirmation it was served or not.
Paul, do you bill for that cleanup?
Yes, sir.
Good.
And so the seven days after we received this notice to bring the property into compliance with the LDR, if you do not do so, you'll be subject to fines up to 200 a day. And so the fines you were talking about.
That was by a court, court, you know, based on that, the court judgment, the court issued it with a $15 a day fine that was put in place, plus attorney fees of $1,795.
I think we're all very frustrated with the slow pace of, of the cleanup. It doesn't, it does impact the entire neighborhood. It's both, yeah, their health concerns or also property.
I mean, our, our office has also coordinated with a cleanup agency that could become, be available as, as soon as next Monday or Tuesday, depending on, we're waiting on what the five day was once we had confirmation being served. So that's awesome.
Okay. Robert, I think you have a question?
Hello, Robert Ebert. Live here in Bennington. I just wanted to contribute my own little bit of history with the property while you're sitting, thinking about it, talking about it. Back in 2018, I think, when I was the interim part-time code enforcement officer for the town of Bennington, I actually dealt with this property. It, it was a mess back then. Worked with the property owner, got it cleaned up. I don't know if the property has changed hands. It's changed hands, but it has been an unsightly detrimental health hazard for years. That was in 2018. It returned to its, its, its deplorable state almost immediately and it's been this way for years. So I just want to share that with you.
Thank you. Yes, please.
I just have a question. There's a property next, next to us on Niles Road, 545 Niles Road, Laura Reed's property. It's been, it's got a vacant poster from the sign that's been on there, I think, for a year or so. It's got yellow tape around it, trash all over. Can't the, can't the town like seize properties like this and auction them off?
So I think, Paul, I mean, I think that's exactly why we're in the proceedings, we're, proceeding we're in.
And what's going on with that property?
So don't have the file ready for him, sir, but with that property, notice of violation has been already issued for the owner of record on that property. And we're at a point now of we would be referring it to our attorneys. We would be at the point where we'd be referring it to town attorney to go to the next steps and try to get court action.
And what's the next step?
File through environmental court to get a judge.
I mean, she's not, she's never lived there. Can the town seize the property and auction it all?
Not now without court actions and then go through different, different methods. Dan, if you want to talk to that.
May I talk about that process? Dan Monk's Assistant Town Manager. So unfortunately, the state of Vermont, it's very difficult to enforce zoning regulations. It takes a lot of time, effort and money, and we often don't even recover our, our costs, never mind our, our, the effort that Paul and his crew go through. But the process is we issue a notice of violation. They have at least seven days to cure. If they do not, then we, then we have to go to court. We, we give the, that notice of violation, violation to our attorney. Merrill's, Merrill Bend is our current attorney, has been for a while. She would then file that in either Superior Court or environmental court, depending upon the appropriate venue. It then often takes months and months and months and months for us to get a hearing. If, if and when we do get a hearing, then the court often will issue less than satisfactory relief, but we try to get a court, we try to get an order where they have to clean it up within a very short period of time where our fines will be imposed and we always seek our costs, of which we very rarely get. And they often give folks a lot of time to, to, to cure. And so we, if, if, for a process to take less than six months would be one of the speediest processes we've ever seen. It's just the way the court system is and with the pandemic, it's become, grown, ground to a halt. And now it's just now kind of coming out of that. So it takes a really, really long time and they've just imposed some new rules where they've actually added on the time that it takes to get an order, especially a default judgment. They now have some mandatory waiting periods that make it even longer. So unfortunately, despite Paul and Bridget's really diligent efforts, it takes a really, really long time to get, to get to the point where we can get a court order to go on the property because by law, we do not have the, we do not have the authority to enter the property without a court order in hand. So that's, that's the unfortunate truth. I wish it weren't the case, but unfortunately, that's what these folks have to deal with. They're pretty much hamstrung.
All right. And so two orders are better than one, yes, in this case? And, and this is frustrating for all of us. It's very frustrating. We know you're working hard and I know the neighbors are desperate to have this rectified. Any more discussion before we vote? No? All right. So in that case? Where's Clark? Oh, Clark, sorry. Okay.
All news to me. Yes, that's why people go to law school and get MBAs and all that kind of stuff. But again, Clark, out of Bennington, from a public health standpoint, I mean, the true idea of something posing a physical risk to the health and safety of the populace. Are there any other legal paths to follow other than the six months of gymnastics? It sounds like you have to go through if we have something that truly represents a physical safety risk, how can we stand by? You know, God forbid something happened to a child from that event and then we're all, we're going to be arguing about then.
Clark, you want to come up and take a look at these pictures?
Yeah. So, so the, yeah, the, the, the short, the short answer, sir, is if it's something that is under a health risk or poses a public health hazard, then there's two options. One would be an emergency, excuse me, one would be an emergency health order if it was something that was so imminent harm, you know, that would not take a six-month process, but would take, issue a, issue a emergency health order, provide the, you know, the time period required for someone to respond. If that is not done within that time period, then take actions at that point. Another method would be just a regular health order, which is, would be similar, but wouldn't be so extremist conditions. But then that would be just before a normal select board that is scheduled here and I'd prepare something in the select board, similar to what we're doing right now, would go through the case. And in this specific case, it was, we started the one action that we thought would be, be a quicker remedy. That started stallin', or we find more about, that's when emergency health order was, was taken. And we had the tools in place that, you know, could take the immediate action. However, with attorney's advice, it being that we now have the court judgment, we're going to follow that process in this specific case. But if it was, if it was somewhere else, it was a different issue, actions could have been taken sooner. An example of that would be the actions that we ended up doing at 957 Gage Street, which was an emergency health order back when we went through that process.
I actually don't understand, but I'm hearing if there are rats and other vermin running around. That property is filling out of next property. I'm making the assumption there are small children that are around. I live out in the west and I have everything from black we're raccoon room to my backyard. And I can imagine some child having, in terms of an animal, I mean, what are we going to say? We're going to pull out the logs and say, well, hit the log with it or her kid. But that's where their mechanism can actually start popping and start building. Using the frozen, we're talking about an addition that is potentially life or limb threatened to the property.
But as I said, the method would be emergency health order and follow through the process on that.
Who initiates that?
That would be myself or the health officer.
And what's your criteria to initiate? Do you have?
So the criteria I would have to use is it's a public health hazard and it's imminent risk, danger of immediate life, limb, or something to that effect. At the end of the day, something that in a court of law, it would stand up to, yes, if every member of the board looked at, yes, this is an emergency condition that warrants this action.
Oh, so the board was, had moved the official term on health and safety of our people and we want to fix now around 6, 8, 9 months.
Correct.
Yes. And that's what we're going to vote on. Yes, and that is what we're going to vote on.
Oh, okay. Here we have, I kept hearing all this.
No problem.
Passionations of what was happening, but I never heard him say, here we're going to do.
Yes. Sam, you have a question? Please come up.
Sam Restino, Bennington, Vermont, once again. We haven't even been inside the structure. Now, the only violation is just on, from what you've put into a public document from the outside, correct? There's no, you haven't even concerned the injured. God only knows what it looks like inside. And this is what I spoke of earlier, my concerns. We get to this point, this is not going to be the unisolated cases. There are going to be more because as you know, preaching to the choir all around here, they wait until you go into the court orders and it gets drawn up. And then who is the burden? The town and the taxpayers. So here we are in a monkey situation of malasses.
Okay. Now, we're hoping to vote on this in a couple minutes. Yes, please.
Can I just make one comment in response? You know, and you'll understand this, sir, as a lawyer, self-help is frowned upon in this state and many, many others. And, you know, my client took ownership of this property in February, but not in a traditional sense where they could just go in and do whatever they want. We still owe rights and obligations to people who may be in possession of it, maybe coming and going. We don't know. And we can't just go in blindly and take self-help. That is when our clients get sued, that is when we get in trouble. I understand your point very well that it's not our job to avoid all lawsuits, that they happen. They happen every day. But my client is, is bound and cannot take self-help on its own. It, it needs a court order to allow it to do certain things. And, and that's what we've done here and we've complied with the statute regarding protecting tenants against foreclosure. And I understand it's frustrating and that took a long time. But my client has the means to not only repair the property, but pay any bills that are due. So I, I think this puts the property, the property and the town in a better situation to get this remedied, to get the fines and, and the attorney's fees paid as soon as possible. And my client can do that. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Thank you. Yes, Nancy, please.
This is my neighborhood. This property has been in a downhill slide for 10 years. Are you saying now the group that bought it in November, somebody else has bought it since then? Well, I thought it was about February.
The owner, the original owner.
Paul, if you can step up.
The NCL was foreclosed and then by the new owner.
Paul, if you can step up to the mic so that Cat TV can hear.
As of November, it was owned by the owner of record. The property was foreclosed on and that's when this gentleman's client, William, William Sames Fun, took ownership of that property. So it changed at that, on a foreclosure.
Well, after what we've looked at, you said you haven't, your client hasn't been able to do anything there since you bought the property?
For the record, the property was not bought. It was a judicial foreclosure.
Whoever owns it now, they weren't able to do anything?
Because of concerns about self-help, which I just talked to the panel about, my, my client has not taken any action that I'm aware of as of today.
Okay, well. The neighbors just want this to be over and, and we don't want this to pop back up. As the gentleman said, it has happened. We've dealt with it. Multiple issues, not just the trash issues. There have been other issues for six or seven years. I don't understand why whoever owns it, nobody got down there. Saturday, suddenly people popped up and started cleaning the place up. Too little, too late. We've had enough in the neighborhood.
Thank you. Any more discussion?
If I could just speak to one thing.
Oh, yes, please.
With the, with the court judgment.
With the, with the court judgment order that we received on Friday, there are stipulations in there that stay with that property, though, for remainder of the time with that property. So even future owners, if they buy it, they'll still be bound to certain conditions.
Oh, that's excellent.
So that is just some, you know, it does take the six months, but there are things that if you go through those actions, it stays longer, though, than just an immediate owner right now. It might be something that stays so that, you know, best case, we don't continue to have a problem property for five, 10 years passing action. Just, thank you.
Great.
I call the question.
All right. All those in favor of affirming the emergency health order, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. So next up, we have implementing the town vision, which I think probably will be fairly quick tonight. Yes. Tom, Jean, Bruce.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, I just want to update everyone that we had mentioned, at least at one or two meetings, that we were going on an ADA tour of town facilities with people that work for VCIL, which is, oh my gosh, Vermont Center for...
Independent.
Independent Living, thank you. And we did that last week. We toured several of the town facilities, and there were some changes, or some, some things that came to light, signage and parking places at the rec center, which have already been done. It was very, very informative. It was great to have the people from VCIL with us, in addition to at least one community member. So it was, it's going to be a long process. Paul's wonderful. Paul's already implementing a lot of the things that, that were identified, and yeah, it was great, it was a great tour and very informative.
Thank you. Tom?
I can be even more brief. I just wanted to make the, everyone in town aware that the CPARB had their first training this past Saturday, was an all-day training, and I understand it was very successful.
Excellent. Bruce, anything? No? Okay. All right. So moving on, set the tax rates and the water and sewer rates. Stu, you are up.
Thank you. This year, we are proposing for the general fund, an increase of 3.21 cents. 3.21 cents. For the highway fund, an increase of 1.92 cents. And for the fire fund, which is the Bennington Fire Department, which is the Village Fire Department, an increase of 1.31 cents. The total increase is a 6.44 cent increase in the tax rate, bringing the total tax rate for those people who are within these districts. And I should note here that the Village of Old Bennington, North Bennington, and the Town of Bennington all pay the general fund. The Town of Bennington and the Village of, the Town of Bennington only pays the highway fund. North Bennington and Old Bennington have their own highway funds. And the fire fund is paid for by the Town of Bennington and the Village of Old Bennington. It exempts those people in the rural district, which are covered by the Rural Fire District, and the Village of North Bennington, which has its own fire department. So the rate, the total rate for those folks who are within these boundaries would be $133.49 per $100 of valuation. It ends up being a 5.7% increase, and I'm asking the board for a vote to approve those tax rates.
All right. For the purposes of discussion, could I have a motion?
I'm, I'm happy to make that motion.
You always do. I'm looking at you.
Well, I'll, I'll move that, that we approve the tax rates as presented.
Sir?
All right. Any discussion? Any questions?
Just, just a reminder that the tax rates are really just the natural consequence of the popular vote that took place in March, and then calculating that with the grand list. So there's, there's, you know, I, I had to explain this all yesterday to somebody, so it was fresh on my mind because they were wondering how. And the fact of the matter is, the people of Bennington, by popular vote, have voted in a particular budget. This is the money necessary in order to meet that budget. I don't know another way to put it. So that's, that's the point that I wanted to make.
So in January, we had budget meetings...
Yep.
Where we went through the budget with a fine-tooth comb and...
In this room.
Department heads came in and went through the budget entirely with us. Then we also, and we then voted on those, on those rates. And then we also had budget meetings for the water and sewer rates...
Mm-hmm.
Fairly recently. So it went to a vote on...
Yes.
Yes, on Town Meeting Day. So, all right. So any, any questions or comments? Nancy, please.
Question on the Police Oversight Committee, the CPARB.
Oh, wait, that is not the topic at hand. I'm sorry.
Well, it's part of the budget, Jeanie.
No, it is not. That, that is not part of what we're discussing.
We're doing the rates, not the budget.
We've already done the budget.
Well, I just had a question. I've been asking you six months, how are you going to pay the committee? The money isn't in this year's budget.
The committee isn't paid.
They don't get paid.
You're not going to pay them, and they aren't going to have a budget?
Correct.
Oh, I thought you decided you were going to pay the people.
No. Nancy, no, and, and you asked this question during budget, and we had that conversation. So now we're looking at rates.
And the overall increase is 5.7?
5.7%.
Right.
Point, 5.07.
Okay.
That's a big difference.
What's the water?
All right, thanks.
You're welcome. All right. Any other questions? All right. So we ready to vote? All those in favor of the motion to support the rates as, as presented...
Approve the rates.
Approve the rates, thank you. As presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right.
Now, the second part has to do with the water and sewer rates.
Yes.
We recently had the work sessions on these two budgets. The board has approved the budgets themselves. We calculated the rates, and these rates are broken down into two, two different rates. There is a flat rate, which is generally the rate that is charged to the homeowner who is either on municipal water or municipal sewer. And then there is a metered rate, which is charged to most businesses and multifamily dwellings. They're all metered. So in the water fund, we are proposing a rate of 153.25. That's $153.25 per quarter. It's a 5% increase. We are proposing a combined rate of, for 1,000 gallons at $97.80 per 1,000 gallons. That too is a 5% increase in the water fund. In the sewer fund, we are proposing a quarterly rate, flat rate, of 144.63. That's $144.63. And a combined rate for metered customers of $94.90 per 1,000 gallons. Each of those rates are a 10 and 1/2% increase, which is the last year of a major increase, 10 and 1/2% over a four-year period, as we built up the reserves and our fund balance in the wastewater and sewer fund. So I'm looking for a motion to approve those rates as presented. So move.
Thank you.
Second?
Thank you. All right. Any discussion? Yes.
Sam Ristino, Bennington, Vermont. This board is great for going after grants, a lot of grants. There's no grants available for, because of our aging system that we can't go after to, because of incurred expense. I mean, I see this as not the end of, of rates going up. Next year, we're going to be in this discussion again, possibly correct, by our aging wastewater treatment plant and our waters. We're already talking about Benmont Avenue with pipes.
Well, Sam, there are federal dollars that are coming to the state of Vermont as part of the whole infrastructure bill that was recently passed. Those monies have not yet been allocated as to how they will be spent, but they are to be dedicated to water and sewer infrastructure. So we will be looking for grants to improve the infrastructure of our, both of our systems. What we are funding now basically are operating expenses and past bond costs.
Right. And I understand because of inflation, yes.
So, yes, there are projects within these dollars that will be done on an annual basis. But for the coming years, we hope to do some major infrastructure improvements using grant funds that will be available to us, once the state of Vermont has determined how it will release those funds.
Can I make a request to this board that we watch in the projects that we are going after, like Willow Park and the skate park? Those are extravagant wants, want lists. We need to live within our means, and I'm speaking for myself and the citizens of Bennington. You're going to get reverbications, and you know what's out there in the pudding. Once the, the bills come out, people are not aware, they don't listen, they don't read the paper, but when they get that bill, there's going to be some screaming out there, and who's to say it's not going to happen more? We just have to live within our means. I mean, a million-dollar skate park and Willow Park, that can be, sometimes we have to wait. Good things come to those who wait. Waiting for a whole year for, until we do our repairs, isn't going to hurt anybody. Thank you.
Sam, those two projects that you mentioned came from ARPA funds. It didn't cost the people of Bennington, taxpayers, a dime.
Okay, I stand corrected, but like I said, let's...
Well, when you drill that stuff out there, and you're in error, people, some people will listen to it. But thank you for the opportunity to make it clear, at least to you, that these two projects are not costing the people of Bennington, the taxpayers of Bennington, a dime.
Okay, thank you.
Nancy, please.
You know, people know that we have that sewer bond out on the wastewater plant that goes, I think, until 2037. We also have that water bond out on the tower up near SVC, and what did you call it, Stu? The West End Project?
It's called the South End.
South End Project.
It's called part of the South End Project, yes.
I think that goes till about 2035. You gave out the list of possible ARPA projects in January. Town officials, I counted up over $24 million of future needs of our water and sewer. These are things we're going to have to pay for. Even with state and federal grants, we're going to take a huge hit at the local level, and I urge you to think about using some of that ARPA money. That sand filter we're going to need at the wastewater plant, $1.2 million roughly. I, I think it's crazy to tell us in a couple of years we could go out to bond, when we got a free $4 million, and, and infrastructure is one of the things a lot of towns are investing money in. The other thing, we've been selling our spring water for 20 years, and I asked you a couple of years ago, put a spot on the rec center property where people could take their bottles, bottles and containers and access that water. There's no spot there. Originally, you said the spot would be across from Domino's. I don't think there's a place we can get the water up there, is there?
No, there's no spigot for public use.
So does the contract say that we can't get the water for free while the town is selling it?
No, the contract has nothing to do with whether or not we charge for our water.
I'm saying make it access for free to the public. Why shouldn't people, I mean, that's some of the cleanest, purest water in the world. Why should we have to go to the store to buy it when we could go to a spigot at the rec center property and fill containers and bottles?
But you, you would be asking the ratepayers, then, to subsidize those people who go and get the water for free. So basically, you're, you're increasing this, the use of our water without actually gaining any funds to support the operation of it.
I, I think for paying over $1,000 a year in water and sewer, I'd save myself $300 to $400 if I didn't buy bottled water at the store, if I could get it at the rec center. So I think a lot of us, it would balance out.
Uh...
I mean, we do so much for the county and the region, we can't even have free spring water in Bennington. And I know the town water is safe to drink. I know people who, for 50 years, have gone up on the mountain to get spring water. I mean, to me, it's, it's crazy. You can't even access the water.
Any other questions? All right. Yes, all right. We ready to vote on the water and sewer rates for next year? All those in favor, we made a motion, didn't we?
Yes, yes.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Please say no. Any abstentions? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Managers report.
Yes. No, no action items tonight, just a few updates. One that was not included in my report, we now have reviewed all of the environmental reports that the Armory folks have provided to us in that particular project, and the Armory is in very good condition. There is no contamination, and we've had an environmental scientist look at those reports, and he has reported to us. So the Armory is in very good, good condition at the present time. Also, at this time, the National Guard, through their engineering firm, Stone Environmental, will be beginning soil testing on the site where the new readiness center will be. So we are now moving forward. I am told the federal funds are in the pipeline. We're looking, we've seen some preliminary design of the readiness center, and we've got to talk with the National Guard about when this transfer occurs. That's the next step in that process. They're still looking at 2023, 2024, for the new center to be available to them. So there's still time, but we're moving forward on that particular project.
Great. And so we'll need to think about timing on bringing, bringing the community in to think about how we want to use the Armory.
Yes.
So we should think about the time.
Remember, we have a planning grant out there with, through VCRC that they're taking a look at that project, parcel right now, and when that report is finalized, then I think that would be the appropriate time to present that to the public and also gain their input.
Do you have a sense of a timing on that?
I do not.
Okay.
Just a brief note here, our TIF extension was approved, so we now have an additional five years in which to determine whether or not we use the TIF to support projects. And one of those projects most likely will be the Ben High renovation project when we begin to go forward. That is the one we can see on the radar. There may be others that come our way. So at least we haven't lost that as a tool for helping development within the Bennington community. There were some questions that have been raised about letters that people received from MSK Engineering about testing for lead lines in your home. Please, if you've gotten one of those letters, it's because your neighborhood has been identified as having potential lead lines, lead water service lines, not water mains, but the service line coming into the house may have sections of it, or all of it will be lead. Please get the testing. The engineers will come to your home, they'll take a look. If they can't determine from viewing it, they will do several tests on the water itself, and if, in fact, you are found to have or suspected of having lead service lines, they will be replaced for you free of charge through a federal grant that Bennington was successful...
Is there any charge for the test?
No charge for the test. This is all free. So please, don't, don't be concerned, but answer positively if, if you've been notified. Last little piece of information, ARPA funds at work, the land records are in the cloud. It's been very sunny, so I'm not sure anyone's been able to see them, but nonetheless, they're, they're there. Now, they're not all there, but they're now being added to the, to the cloud. So our records, land records are being digitized. And the last piece of information is that primary ballots are available to the town clerk's office. clerk's office. We have a drop box out front. If the office is not open, when you want to drop your ballot off, please, the primary ballots are there and we encourage you all to vote.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure people knew if you want to vote in person, it's August 9th.
Right. Correct.
Great.
That's all I've got.
Wonderful. All right. Question?
Yes. Stu, those of us who have already gone through the process of getting a new lead service, or lead-free service line, also, I believe, received a letter from MSK and also our water department talking about future testing of that, of the domestic water. Is, did that go out to everybody? I was going to do, I was going to call Larry and, and didn't get a chance to do it yet.
That letter probably is going to everyone who, who has received a lead-free service line.
Yeah.
That hasn't had them before.
Right. So sometime there might very well be testing.
Some follow-up testing to ensure that the project has been.
As part of the project. That's. Good.
Great. All right. Any other questions? No? All right. Then upcoming agenda. So let's see. What I'm thinking, is it, is it accurate that we're going to do bike pedestrian pathway?
First meeting in August.
First meeting in August. Okay. So that's two meetings from now. And we're doing, next meeting, we're planning on an ARPA update, particularly on Ben High.
Where we're at, we'll do one, may not be that substantive, but.
Okay. Okay. Okay.
Is Kayla, Kayla coming?
I don't know with the timing on Kayla's.
She wants to be at the end of August.
Okay.
Because then she'll be able to give you the results of the summer program.
Okay.
And also the, what they're planning for the fall.
Okay.
So that would work better for them, so.
All right. So we have the opioid response team coming then as well, so. Okay. So August 22nd.
That's August 22nd.
Yeah.
Yeah. But for July 25th, we have a very scarce agenda at the present time.
Good.
Okay.
I'll believe it when I see it.
So, all right. So right now, the only thing we know is an ARPA update, but stay tuned. Okay. Great. All right.
One never know.
Other business. Gary, anything?
Nothing.
Yeah, in case you didn't hear, primary ballots are now available at the town clerk's office. And you can vote anytime between now and August 9th. And if you think you can't make it on August 9th, do it before. Thanks.
Jim? All right. Sarah? Bruce?
I got nothing.
Okay. I just want to say the community garden fence, the picket fence is, it's not picket. The split rail fence is gorgeous. So if you haven't been down Bradford to see the new.
Oh, okay.
Fence, it is absolutely beautiful, as is the community garden. So thank you to the town for doing that.
Two more people.
I'm, I'm ready to vote.
Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.